Okay. The plan for tonight was to deal with the only budget that I want to deal with specifically, or we can deal with any of them specifically, but the only division department head we have is the water and sewer. And part of that is because they have presented us with a request for supplemental agreement, which would extend our agreement with Alliance on the same terms and conditions that we currently have. And I thought we needed to discuss that kind of at the same time or before we discuss their budget, and they're prepared to discuss the budget tonight as well. So the purpose is we will deal with Alliance, and the reason that I think we can do that is that the financing for the water and sewer is a dedicated fund. Whatever budget problems we have for the things that we need to deal with from general revenues really doesn't affect that budget. And so we can consider them before we look at anything else, because we don't have the latitude of moving money from one to another, and we can reach a consensus on that. Then we need to move to a discussion about the overall budget. And I prepared a summary that I think we need to discuss and kind of come to a general consensus on what direction we want to take before we call in the department heads and talk about individual items. So that's what I hope we'll accomplish tonight, and I think we'll be able to do it in an hour or less.
Good. Eight o'clock, I come into pumpkin.
Okay. So we'll start with Terry and Steve, and start with your supplemental agreement proposal.
Can I just sit up here?
Yeah. Come on up here. A few weeks ago, we talked about maybe coming in and making sure that everybody on the board understood what we do and why we were here in the beginning. So yesterday, when I spoke with Martin about being able to come here tonight, I went ahead and put together a short presentation of qualifications for St. Genevieve with some history in it. The first page in there has a letter that I wrote to you guys yesterday outlining some of the things that we told you we would do when you asked us to run the wastewater and the collection system and distribution systems in 2010, after we'd already been here for a year running the water plant. And, you know, some of those major things on the top were pretty big challenges, getting the water meters changed out, helping to improve the billing process, helping capture some more revenue. The rehab of the water plant, you know, we worked around the clock for days at different times running the water plant, getting it rehab from the conditions that it was in, you know, where it wasn't meeting all the needed requirements, finding the M Road tank issues and getting those taken care of, and some other things, and you can read that. But all those things that we said we would do in 2010 are completed and in process. And so for those that weren't here during that time, I won't go through this whole thing by no means. This is for you all to read about our company, the ones that might not understand everything that we do and who we are. But I did want to point out something that I think the majority of the people don't always understand. If you go to section five, it's got the key personnel listed there. And when Alliance comes in, we do a lot more than just run the water and wastewater plant and assistance. Dale Wagner, the president of the company, is reachable and accessible. Sandy Neal's the vice president of the company, very reachable and accessible. Tim Garrity's my boss, he's an engineer. He's been down here a few times helping on some problems when they come up. Ann does finances. She's -- Ann's talked with some people here in the past when there were some billing issues, there are some software possibly upgrades and stuff. She's a resource that she gets. Mark Mailer's a physician in our company for safety compliance. He comes in and does audits and inspections. All these things are free, at no additional cost. Of course, I'll come in whenever asked. I try to come in whenever Steve meets me and then make periodic stops. Steve's here. And these next two guys, I wanted you to see them, because I value their friendship and what they bring to our company. Kevin Priestert is in our Cape Girardeau division. He comes up whenever we have a problem or sends people up. No additional charges for that stuff. And Rob Fisher's an area engineer at the St. Charles County office. He comes or sends people whenever we need it. So there are people behind the scenes that you don't always see, and I just wanted to make sure that those that didn't know that have the opportunity to see that. I mean, that's just part of the company.
Do you take care of Cape Girardeau, everything down?
The water treatment facility and putting in the water lines, you know, that kind of stuff. We don't do sewer work. And there's a profile of what all we do. We are wanting, our contract's up September 30th. It's time to renew it. The supplemental agreement that you might have a copy of in front of you was prepared to be put in place prior to now, because now it doesn't have, or this agreement, the idea for that was to vote on it and get the contract extended prior to the budget year, and then we would talk about the dollar amount. So this document's kind of null and void at this point, because instead of having two documents that we would need at this point, I thought a good thing tonight would be to see what you felt about the contract extension and those terms, and then we'll have to draw up another document and then have it ready for a later date and time. But I don't want to draw up a document that you wouldn't be in favor of. And so having some discussion about it, I think, is important. We've been here for five years. I think we've done a good job. I think most of the people here appreciate it, and we would like to have a seven-year contract extension. That's the number that I chose. I like seven years. I want ten or twenty or whatever. The norm in the industry's ten years now. If you take all, and how I came up with the seven years, which is, you know, again, you can talk about that. I took all the contracts that we have in our company and divided them. Our average time is now seven years, because we have ten- and fifteen-year contracts. And so what a normal is, our new contracts typically come in five, but it comes out to be an average of seven. So I think it's 6.95. I put seven years. That's what I'd like to have, unless you guys have a problem with that.
New contracts are now five years?
Typically, our new contracts--
This one here was like four years?
This one here, this one here was, I think, three years, and then it started in 2009. In 2010, the city wanted us to start taking care of the wastewater treatment facility and the distribution and collection, because the city's under the consent order from the EPA, and we started helping try to get the city out of that. And we've been, and it's going to be a while before the city gets out of this consent order, but we have been able to reduce the reporting requirements by a lot of the things that we've been doing. So in 2010, we started another contract for four years.
Four years.
And so that's why we've been here for five years. So we've already had a contract expansion and extension that is now ready to expire. And so that's why we're asking for seven years.
Terry, could you just go over some, what you think the mutual benefits for the city and for Alliance are for a long-term contract?
You know, continuity of staff. It gives us the benefit of trying to retain staff, gives the staff hope, you know, all the good stuff. For the city, it gives continuity on planning. You know, we did a performo for the city, Martin and myself, a couple of years ago. It went all the way out to 2018 on the plans, you know, and if we know we're going to be involved in those plans all that time, we can keep working towards them, we can keep updating them, we can keep things going. I mean, on the board, I mean, how many people have noticed the plans of when the city was going to do mapping and all these things that all of a sudden the board switches and now that stalled, and then that stalled, and then that stalled. This gives the continuity of different projects to keep moving forward, keep upgrading, stay pay attention and all that. I think it's a partnership between us. I mean, we'll do anything that the city wants us to do. I mean, we're not just the water and sewer department. If it snows and you need help with snow, we go push snow. If, you know, whatever the city needs, I mean, we're at your pleasure, but we're contractually bound to do certain things. So there's been times, you know, that when Steve says, hey, we're going to have a big snowstorm, can we help? Well, sure, we can help, but let's make sure we got this done and this done, because we got to do that. But, I mean, if there's two foot of snow in the ground, we can't go read meters or we can't go do things, so why wouldn't we help with that? So, I mean, that's the reason. There's just a lot of planning, a lot of help, and a continuity together.
Another thing, when I was looking through this as you were talking, and your other assets in Missouri, but in our region, like Cape and your safety people and your corporate staff, when they come in to help on a project or is there an extra cost to the city when they come to help?
I don't think the city's ever been built for anything we've done so far. I mean, a couple of things that pop in mind, there was a car hit a fire hydrant down--
Washington.
On Washington and Third. Fire hydrant had been installed a few years ago improperly. There was no restraints on it, and water was spraying out of the ground. I mean, there was nothing to hold it and no valves to shut it off. We didn't have the expertise in town at the moment with the staff we had. You know, I get on the phone, make two phone calls, and they bring the crews up from Cape Girardeau and with stuff that we need. I mean, we're calling people in Illinois, it's going to cost $5,000 to put these valves in, do all this stuff, and the guys from Cape in the middle of the night came up and done it. No cost. I'm not saying everything we would do would be at no cost. Some other divisions that I'm over, we've had to bring in crews to put in sewer patches. The agreement with that machine is there's a fee for that machine. It's a, you know, there's a cost associated with the use of that machine. The Alliance labor might not be added to it, but that machine has a cost, and those patches are $800, $900 a piece, so sure, there's a cost to that.
I guess what I was most interested in is just the technical support from other people that are doing what Steve and his guys do here all the time.
Now, that's why I gave this packet out. All the resources of Alliance, at my level, division level, and up, are at your fingertips when necessary. You can't, I mean, you get that with Sue and them has made phone calls to Dale in the past and our IT departments about things. That's, I mean, we work for you as a company, not just Steve and me. You, not saying you're going to get it tomorrow if they call, but you will get assistance on anything that comes from the company. Rob Fisher, the engineer, that's why I have him in here, I mean, he's got an engineering department. Steve's been working with them right now on some GIS mapping planning. I mean, we're trying to figure out a way to get mapping for the city at a fraction. I mean, we're looking at some generic stuff that we're thinking about buying. I mean, without charging the city anything, just so we can get this moving, because we do have that expertise, and we're just working some of those details out. And that's at no cost right now. Does that answer?
Yeah. That's what I was saying.
So our current agreement, under the term termination, had a provision that says thereafter, the agreement shall be renewed automatically for successive terms of four years each, unless canceled by either party in writing no less than 90 days prior to the expiration. Now, I think an annual review is a good thing, and since I've been here, we've done this every year. That, talk about the rates. What happens to that provision if we, why don't we just continue to rely on successive terms unless somebody chooses to cancel?
We can. I'm just asking for it to go to seven years instead of four.
Okay.
That's, I mean, the contract language, everything is pretty much the same. It's just that I'm asking for seven, instead of in four years going through this cycle and, you know, of renewing the contract, just so the guys feel better and everybody feels better and we can start planning out terms. Yeah, sure, it's just a kind of a grading thing for me, too. I mean, it's one of the things that I try to do is get it to, you know, five and seven years, where we feel comfortable, we can put it on our books, you know, it's our business model, our business plan. It's not a, I mean, the seven years is not a, it's not a, to me, it's not a point that I want to argue about or cause any heartburn at all. I mean, because if we do nothing, you know, it renews, it goes on four years, but that's an, to me, it's an oddball number. I would like to see five or seven is what I would like to see.
Okay. I didn't tell you I was going to ask this question, so I kind of hate to put you on the spot.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm going, go ahead. Not going to stop you. There are folks in this community who look at the $800,000 we're spending on Alliance and wonder, because it seems like a lot of money to them--
Sure.
--why that amount of money, why we couldn't do it for less if we brought it in-house.
You know, I don't want to throw anybody under the box at all here, but the city was doing it theirself, and--
But I don't think they were spending $800,000.
Well, and they were in violation, and you have a consent order from the EPA right now that comes with lots of fines and penalties if you don't meet these things. And the consent order was issued, wasn't even for the water. The water was in violation for factorological issues and stuff, and the city came to us and asked us. We didn't pursue the city at the time. And the city chose to hire us, started running the water plant. Water plant's been taken care of, it's running better. We started helping you guys with your sewer system. Ionized been reduced, SSO's been reduced. All the violations and the penalties that were moments away from that have now been put on kind of the back burner. Nobody's knocking on the door. I don't know when the last EPA letter that was a nasty gram was sent. And so could you do it yourself again? You know, if you chose to do that. But at the same token, when we came here in 2009, the finances of the water department was in poor shape. And I think if you look at your records today, I think there was somewhere around $300,000 in reserve in 2009. I think if you look at the numbers today, it's about a million dollars. And all of that's been from planning and going forward, so I think that the benefit we bring outweighs any cost that's associated with it, because out of that eight-hundred-some-thousand dollars, there's 55,000 of that direct money that is for repairs, and every year that we don't spend that, you get it back. It's yours. I mean, but that's in that number, so it makes it look larger. I mean, that's what I would have to say about that. I mean, that's a pretty accurate number, wasn't it, Sue? I was kind of shooting from the hip on that. But I tracked that stuff.
What was the number? What was the number?
You know, I think there was about $400,000, $300-some-thousand dollars in reserves on the water and sewer fund when we came. Is that about right?
Close to a million.
And now it's right at a million dollars. And the reason for that is, is we've been planning to do these projects, and like the water and sewer, the sewer project or water project that we were going to do, and we've been trying to get the grant, which I think the city's just been recognized to get that grant, those type of things, I don't know if anybody prior to us being here was helping with that. The first year we were here, we saved the city from spending $380,000. So out of the $800,000 that we get a year for being here, the base for the wages and stuff, in one year, we saved over $380,000 from being spent. The M Road water tank, the city had spent $300,000? Is that about right, Sue?
Right.
City had spent $300-some-thousand dollars and paid for services, never received. And had we have not been here reviewing this stuff, nobody was going to ever collect on that. So that's what we do. I mean, I can toot our horn a lot, I don't want to, but, I mean, we're--
This would be a good time for you to do that.
Okay. We're in it. This is what we do for a living. I make one phone call and I get Tim Garrity, my boss, and say, Tim, we got a problem. Boom. I mean, we put a crew together, something's worked on it, finance people, whether it's environmental people or what it is. We go to Jeff City. I'll be in Jeff City on the 10th of September, meeting with senators about issues. All of these things that other people do for themselves, we do for you guys. I mean, we've received two grants since we've been here. One of them, the cost that we had did for the variable frequency drives at the wastewater treatment plant. I'm doing a report on that in Gatlinburg, Tennessee, on the 15th of September, talking about the success of St. Genevieve, because we reduced, it was a, I think the city spent, and this is a lot of you guys, I mean, this is you guys are the ones that are making these decisions, we're just trying to help you, but you allowed us to spend $14,000 to put these variable frequency drives in. We've got an $8,000 a year reduction in energy costs today, even after all the huge increases that they've had, and you were going to spend about a million dollars building more at the wastewater treatment facility, and now we don't even have to use it all, because we're operating it properly. EPA's off your butt. St. Genevieve has received two inspections from DNR in the last couple of years with zero compliance issues. Perfect. Perfect. You couldn't get any better. DNR comes down now and says, can we give a tour? We need people to see how this is supposed to be. And yes, other people could do it. Kevin Curtis, they went to city for 30 years. Kevin's a much better operator today than he was. He was doing the best job he could do, but he wasn't getting the training, he didn't have backing, the regulatory people wasn't able to help. Kevin and Mike wanted us to be here and they were your operators. And now those people are recognized as being top people in the industry, you know, but we've been working with them for four years. We all got to start somewhere.
Well, go along with Martin's comments about the cost of the contract. Do you think the company is willing to negotiate as far as, if you want a longer contract, would they be willing to negotiate the cost of the contract?
Oh, that's what we're hearing.
For a longer period of time?
You know, I mean, we do that every year, and this is how it's been working. In the contract, I think the current contract says that we will settle on 3% a year increase if we can't reach an agreement. Doesn't say it's going to be 3%, it says if we can't reach an agreement. So back in like April or May, when I was, when I presented this supplemental agreement, I changed it from 3% to not being any more than 2.8, because I know the increase is not going to be more than 2.8. I mean, we've been putting a lot of things in place. The first couple of years, we ate a lot of cost with overtime. That water plant, you know, the records weren't correct, pumping wasn't correct. We were burning through a lot of manholes. We were budgeted to run that plant for 12 to 13 hours a day, and we were averaging 16 to 18. We're at 20 hours a day in the last couple of weeks, by the way, on the water plant. So we never did budget more than that. We just had to start shuffling staff. We had to start working more. And so through meter reading being more efficient now, we've been able to take the meter readers that were reading meters, cross-train those guys into running water plants for half a day at a time here and there. The manhole replacement program that we're doing, the city was paying $110 a linear foot to have those paid outside. We're doing now, we're doing that now for about 80% less. It's about 20, 25% of that actual cost is all you're seeing now, because we're doing that with the staff that was doing other things. So as we get more efficient, less outside influences have to come in to do the cost that, what was the name of the company that did that?
Midwest Semiticians, right?
Yeah. Midwest Semiticians was coming in. You know, now the city, from the savings of the VFD drives, from the just better performance, all that savings that we benefited, we bought, the city, you guys purchased the manhole spraying equipment. Now we spray them for you. We go in, we clean them, we spray them. My presentation in Gatlinburg is called rethink, reduce, and reuse. I mean, we're trying to rethink about how everything's done. We're trying to redo spending and reuse what we got. You know, and I use that terminology on a lot of things, like the manholes that would have cost $5,000 to replace them, you know, we rethought about it. We clean them up, respray them, reuse them, and we reduce the spending. So, I mean, I could get into a great big sales pitch on this, because I'm passionate about the water and wastewater system, but, so to answer your question, could you do it again? Well, of course. But we saved you lots of money, got the city financially sound in the water and sewer department through you guys. You guys are the ones that made the decisions, but we've helped facilitate that. Me and Martin's worked together, me and Mike Fowler's worked together, me and the mayor's worked together. Now we're in a position to start fixing some of the other issues, the water lines and sewer lines, and might not have to borrow as much money. So I hope that answers.
There's a lot of water lines that have to be replaced.
You know, we, I mean, part of the plan that we're at right now is really close to about a million-dollar project. And when we first started looking at that, we budgeted to do like $150,000 a year. Well, then this grant come available to help pay for some of the engineering, so we helped you guys, you know, look up an engineer. And I believe we got the grant in about 45% of what that's going to be. And so what we got to thinking about was, instead of doing $150,000 a year, now that we've got money in place to make debt service payments, let's do a larger project, so we're not continuously tearing up the streets. The streets can get redone. Everything can get redone, we got a nice project, and there won't be a rate, there doesn't need to be a rate increase or anything to pay for that, was the plan at the time, because we thought ahead far enough to get that put in. And so, and you guys had voted on that at the time, but now I think we're kind of in a stage where we, after we review this grant application for the next phase--
So-- So vote on what again?
I think, I think maybe we'll have to talk about that project again, because I don't know as if we ever signed the engineering agreement.
No, I didn't, because I couldn't sign it and apply for the grant.
Exactly. So I think, I think now we might have to be at that point again, and that might take a vote to sign that now. I don't know. I mean, that's--
Well, they've authorized the mayor to sign it as it was presented.
Okay.
Now, if they want to change it, because a year's gone by, then we'll have to re-vote.
Yeah, I think that that was kind of what they indicated that night, but that's a minor issue, but the project is, should be getting close to being--
Yeah. You kind of touched on it a little bit, but are you saying that by putting in all the new water meters, we went from reading meters and taking somebody four, five days to do it, to that probably is down to taking hours to do it?
Yeah.
You're saving, you're saving money. I'm trying to--
Sure. I mean, here's--
That and even though-- You know, I would thought you would have made money, maybe, hopefully you would have made money the first year you were with us, and even running the plant, what you ran it, and you come back and this year, you know, thank God, because it's saving us money and electricity and others, and other stuff, but the water leak that you found, well, I don't know. You or Steve made a comment that that you could save running the plant two hours a day.
Sure.
So I think you're 2.8% you are.
Now, if you look at the 2.8, that's the maximum it could be. I'm not saying the cost was going to be 2.8. And we did this back several months ago, and the language used to have 3% in it, and so we changed it to 2.8. No, I would be, I would be very open to that. I mean, 2.8's not the number I have in my head. It was back in May or June when we submitted that. But, you know, I know we, every time we do something to be more efficient, people are not just standing around, because there's so much more to do. The city was behind on meeting their own deadline that they had submitted to the EPA on the sewer improvement project. So when we inherited that project, what the city had four years to get done, we had to get done in two years to keep the city in compliance on that. So as we went through that and got the city back on schedule on that, we had to throw a lot of-- we, we had to throw a lot of force, a lot of, a lot of people at that. And again, outside people come in, and we got the city caught back up. Uh, and now that we read meters less time than we did, we do other things. The manhole spraying takes a lot of time when, when we go to do that. So, we have to put crew together, now they're spraying manholes. If we didn't get the meter reading done and save those hours, we wouldn't have the labor available to be spraying those manholes. And so, and that's gonna be an ongoing type thing.
You got the same amount of people now that you had two thousand and nine?
Yes, two thousand and ten, when we started this, we had the same amount of people. And the one thing that we've tried to do is we've tried to bring in some outside help in the summertime now, to stay caught up with some of the mowing and, and some of the things that we try to help with. And, uh, so, we, this year, I think we went to the temp agency and actually brought in a couple of people. We've hired some local people in the past to mow the banks at the lagoons and, and lime lagoons and around the wastewater and stuff. So, we do bring in some seasonal employees now to help keep caught up with the mowing. We don't have any at the moment, because the mowing's kinda slowed down, but, uh, there's a lot more being done today than there was in two thousand and eight prior to us being here. So, the two point eight is just a number that's in there, that's not what we're asking for.
One of the things that Steve, I'm pretty sure that you brought to our attention through your last monthly report that stuck out with me was the water, uh-
Loss.
Loss, reduction. I mean, that's a pretty significant sustainability issue that I think gets missed when we talk about that. Can you refresh my memory on what that was?
It's down to sixteen, it's down to sixteen point eight now.
From?
In two thousand and nine, it was forty-eight percent.
Forty-eight percent, so almost half of the water that we produce-
Just went away.
Well-
And now it's down to sixteen percent.
I'm not saying that it all was, just went away, it wasn't being accounted for. There was a lot of water being used that wasn't being paid for, being metered, a lot of things. You know, we've replaced the big meter at Mississippi Lime, all the meters have been replaced at some of the other facilities. Water's being accounted for a lot better. And yes, I think there's been a lot of leaks and a lot of accountability that's been done. And where that benefits the city, if you look at your facility plan, is, again, the, the cost savings to the city for us being here was, you're not spending a couple million dollars that you were slotted to spend at the wastewater plant and in the facilities plan at the water, it's several million dollars to expand and grow that plant. We, by, by having the water loss, recovery, and those things, the plant is still capable of providing all the water that Saint Gene needs. But last week, in my reports, we were at over twenty hours a day on average. So, you only have a little bit of room left. And had that water not been found and been accounted for and covered, we, we wouldn't be able to keep up. The plant, the plant would've been outgrown.
Why, why were we at twenty?
Pardon me?
Why were we at twenty hours, or whatever you said twenty?
That's, that, because that's how much water's being used right now.
Just because of the dry factor?
The, the dry factor and stuff, so, in the, in the wintertime, actually, there's Saturdays and Sundays in the wintertime that we'll only run the plant twelve hours. And in the summer, with the use factor going up to watering the yards and whatever that comes in, I mean, we were at twenty hours for the last couple of weeks. Now, another influence on that is the river. The water supply that we have coming in is, is groundwater. But it, it, it builds pressure from the river, is what we're finding. And as the river raises, like it was earlier this year, we can pump a lot more water to the facility than we can when the river goes down. And so, we might be able to pump thirteen hundred gallon a minute into the plant at times, and our produ-, and our hours of operation drops substantially. But when we get back down to where we're only pumping a thousand gallons of water a minute, then they go right back up. So, the water supply has an influence there too.
Kinda made it sound like the water's coming from the river.
It's not coming from the river, but the weather relates to that, that's how we track it. No, the city of Saint Genevieve gets water out of the ground, not from the river. Uh, but it, but it, it kinda correlates together on that. So, when the production GPM goes down, the hours of operation goes up, because we can't get any more water. I mean, literally, we run the plant twenty-four hours a lot of times.
Martin, just to get back to the question you had, is, why did it, this only cost the city three hundred thousand dollars and now it costs eight hundred thousand dollars? I get asked that, I have been asked that a lot in the past, and it's pretty easy for me to explain. Uh, we had, we were good people, uh, which many are working for Alliance now, uh, doing that job. But, the previous Board of Aldermen, the city council, didn't do its job. They did not provide any training, any, uh, upgrades to, to manage the water and sewer department. Um, we got what we paid for, we, we just, we had water, but that was it. And, uh, I think that, um, anytime you bring in technical specialists, you, you know, as long as you're not paying too much for the service, you're doing, you're doing better than you were when you're doing it yourself.
One more thing on that, one of the reasons our contract started here and went to here, we started with four employees and now we have nine. But we, when we started, we were just running the water treatment facility. And then, when our contract expanded and we started taking care of the collection system, the distribution system, the tires, and the wastewater treatment facilities and pump stations, we inherited the city staff and hired them and went to nine people. And then, so that made our contract look like it went way up. But, we, we, we hired the city staff and then started training them. So, our contract did go way up, but it more than doubled in size. Is the re-, one of the main reasons, another reason that our number went up so much. So, I, I don't know if you guys are okay with the seven, because what I'll have to do is go back and, and rewrite something. Uh, I would like to put seven years in there, if you guys would, you know, give me a nod. I mean, you're not voting on it tonight, but if you give me a nod, I'd put seven years in, if-
I think it's something we need to talk about, as a council.
When I go to my customers and I try to get long-term, multi-year contracts, when I can achieve that, uh, it's good for my company and it's good for my customers. Because I'm assuming some risk, well, I'm making promises for a long time that I have to keep. So, I see value in a long-term contract. If we were unhappy with your services, if we had concerns about the stability of your company, about your people, I would have, I would have hesitation to look at a seven-year contract. But I don't feel those things. I, I, I see value in what, what Alliance has brought to the city. And I see value for, uh, the city to enter into a long-term agreement.
I agree with Tom.
I agree.
One of the things that, uh, probably where I see the most beneficial and has saved probably the difference in what we're paying them is, you know, you hire engineers that you think know what they're doing, you hire people on the outside. Just like we, when we hired you, we thought you knew what you were doing. And I, I think we've proven that, I believe that you do. But, the fact that you have an engineer, and I, I, as long as I'm here, I don't know that we would ever hire him again, but maybe one of these days, if things changed. But anyway, there was a particular engineering firm that we had that was driving us in one direction. And without, and, and again, you expect these people to be experts in their field when you hire them. And, uh, without these guys, we would've spent a whole lot more money than what we, we spent with them. We start work, we saved a hell of a lot of money-
It's millions of dollars if you would've followed-
Having the fact that they were, had the expertise to look at what they were doing and what they were suggesting that we do and say, "You don't need this." And I'm not the one to say that, I don't have the expertise to say that, nobody on this board's got the expertise to say that. But you got a consultant here that can say, "You guys are wrong, we don't need to do this." And it's, it has saved us a lot of money in that alone.
Something else that's, I guess, kinda being overlooked too is, from the stories that I've heard when you guys took over, the condition of all our facilities was in horrible shape. And then you guys came in and, if, if you guys would've came in and able to continue to deteriorate, we'd probably be spending a lot more now than what we are, trying to keep up, is that correct?
You know, I think, I, I, I think the council needs to take some credit for the, the, the last five years of the aggressive stance that you've taken to allow us to help lead and drive that. But yes, there's a reason that the EPA says you're in a consent order. I've been doing this for almost thirty years. And this is the only town I've ever worked in that the EPA has issued a consent order. It happens, but that is huge. Uh, yes, the water plant was in very poor shape. We didn't do a lot there, we helped facilitate, we helped with the, you know, the grants and some things like that. But, yes, when we got here, literally, they were cleaning out one of the tanks at the water plant, and a power washer blew through a metal tank, that's how bad it was. Uh, water was everywhere. Uh, but, this board, or, and, and some people that's, are no longer on the board, needs to take a lot of credit for that, because they, they took aggressive stance to get the money, let, hire us, and things are a lot better. I don't, I don't like it being the city and Alliance, I like it for us to be the one team, because I mean, literally, we will help with about anything, we have the expertise to help with, although we're contractually bound to do certain things. I mean, I, 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 I don't know how else to say that, we feel like we're part of the city. Uh, that's why we've helped in parks and streets and, and we'll do whatever we can, we help Dave's crews, these guys. If we got an expertise, we're not gonna let the city make a mistake. If we see it happening, we're gonna say, "Hey, you think about this." So, I would, we're talking, five, five years or seven years would be the number I'd like to see in the contract. Seven years would be my preference.
I don't, don't see a problem with either one, whatever we want to do, let's do it.
So, now let's talk about the cap.
Okay.
If we're going to go seven years, how about-
I don't have the authority-
And you don't think it's ever gonna be two?
Okay, now, I don't have the authority to put a cap on it, but I do think that I could cut-
Two point eight's your proposal.
Two point eight was what I put in there for the first year. I, if you give us a seven-year-
Well, that's a cap, for the first year.
For the first year, for the, on the preceding year, that two point eight was-
Well, you're gonna, if we're gonna go out seven years, you're gonna have to like, give us something.
We, we can't, we can't do that. Or I, I don't have the expertise or the knowledge to give you that right now, because there's some circumstances that might come up. What if, all of a sudden, we had to build another water plant, what if we're running two water plants? What if the, what if things change?
Well, we can write language that covers the, kind of, those kinds of things.
What if, okay, I mean, maybe, maybe I will go back to the, to the office, and we could talk about, there's things like we could put, uh, it's the CPI. Whatever the CPI is, is what, what the cost would be. There's all kinds of things like that we could do. But, in our company, we do everything we can to hold our costs down. But, everybody, you guys feel the same pains as we do, healthcare, all these things.
But we don't, we don't, we aren't able to negotiate increases in our revenue to cover that pain. Which is the topic of the next conversation.
Well, that's, that's what the, that's what the Water and Sewer Fund, that's what the rate increases are for and stuff. I mean, if you think we're gouging you, we, we need to talk about that. But we try to come back with very modest, very low, realistic number. Our percent profits don't change, I mean, we, we work on a very small profit line. And so, we come back with what we feel like we need. Uh, you know, we could put something in the language like, you know, "Won't exceed two point eight percent increase for the next two years." But I don't see how we could, I, I mean, I, I think that's about as far as I could push it with that talking to the owner of the company.
You'd have to nail down every service-
Yeah.
And, and line item it, and say, "Only if we do this." But if we have to do any more, then we will charge more, so then we'd never know how much we're gonna bet.
We brought in two summer helpers at one time, just to, to get caught up, because the grass and everything was going crazy. Uh, and no additional cost.
Yeah, but you're gonna get better as every year goes on, you're gonna have-
Get a bigger model.
You're gonna do something like eliminate meter reading, and you're gonna get all the manholes-
And that keeps us from having to ask for six and seven and eight percent increases.
Galloping another community where they are installing the, the automatic-
Always coming from.
Readers on the meters and, and, and what's being asked there is, well, okay, now if they're not gonna have to read meters, are, are rates gonna go down?
Right.
And so, well, maybe they won't go up as much.
Now, now, remember, when we've done this, meter reading, that efficiency had already been taken in mind when we came in in two thousand and ten for the water and sewer side. The four employees to run the water plant, that was the shoot in the dark. But we've been here for a year, knowing that we were getting ready to increase the efficiency of the meter reading. That was, that grant had already been taken place, and we'd been helping the city get that. We knew at that time what the staffing requirements would be, because if you think about your facilities plan when we came here, you were gonna hire two more additional employees to do stuff. We were able to reduce that back by this planning. Your, the, the, the reports and all the documents that you had and paid for, had, had that spelled out when you were gonna hire this employee, and then the next year, when this got done, you was gonna have to hire another employee, we're not doing that. And so, knowing the efficiencies that we were gonna be able to do, we were able not to have to do that. Uh, and I'm glad you brought up that about the engineer. In my presentation that I'm putting on, one of the things is, is get a second opinion. You know, because these people were a driving force of all the monies that was being spent and all these things. And, you know, we rethink and reduce, so, I mean, we're rethinking how to do this, and we're trying to reduce the cost. And I think we're doing a good job of holding-
Engineers don't get paid unless they design something.
That's right.
Their incentive is to build new things.
And I, I think we're holding the cost down, is pretty good. I, I, I can't, I could never promise that, Martin. I mean, maybe somebody above me in the company, the owner, could, or the director of finance, or somebody, but-
Well, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I sense that there's a general feeling that a longer term is okay.
But, but make it worth, make it worth our while.
Well, I think, I, I understand, I think we are making it worth your while, I think, I think that's part of it. I mean, uh, we negotiate the fee every year, and has there been a problem negotiating the fee down? No, we, we come back, "Well, I think we could cut that, and we could do this." Uh, and I think that putting two point eight number in there, "Won't exceed two point eight for the next two years" out of a seven-year contract, is very livable. I'll go back and sharpen the pencil, we'll try to come back in a little bit less. But if we can't, we'll have to live with two point eight. It says three in the other, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, and I think I can sell that.
We're comfortable with that and four-year renewal.
Okay, well, I just need to know when I gotta go back and prepare for the next board meeting. I, I would be glad to come back with something that says a seven-year contract, uh, no more than a two point eight percent increase for the next two years. Uh, and take that back to my bosses and see if they're okay with that, and bring that back. If you guys are okay with that.
What about the other five years, you go back to the three, is that what you're proposing?
No, I'm not proposing, I, I just don't know what to say about it. I, I hate to, I think three would be a good number to put in there, if we can agree on a cost. Because even though it says three, that's if we don't agree. There might be a time that we have to say five percent. And then we would have to sit down and agree to that five percent. If we don't agree to that five percent, then it's, then it's three. What I think I could go back to my boss and say, and talk about this, I think I can say we will not exceed the two point eight for two years. And then go back to the other terminology, I, I think. Now, I'm not promising that, but I, that would be what I would take back to my boss. It's hard to predict that two years with all the changes in rules and regulations. But, you know, I know this year, we can come in under two point eight.
Why, when this agreement ends on, uh-
September thirty.
The last day of September, here we are already into August. Are we cutting this close? I mean, is this appropriate timing to be looking at this, or should we have been looking at this sooner? Or, is it uncomfortable with where we're at now?
I didn't, I mean, usually we look at it the same time we're conserving the budget.
Okay, okay. Right, right now, we know that according to Martin's document, he's holding his hand and said that we would renew and, and move on. But, I think it was appropriate time to, to, to do this. And I, I don't think we're hurting, because we're, we're fifty days away from the new year. But I think that we have to be in place to have something to, to bring you guys to vote on by the end of this month at the last board meeting. That's what we're doing here tonight. So, I mean, would that, would that be okay? To, to come back with a document that says, send a contract to seven years, with the next two years not to exceed an increase at two, more than two point eight percent?
I guess we haven't considered it.
Yeah, I mean, for, for consideration, I wanna, I wanna-
The thing is, you know, we're, we're just talking about this tonight, we're talking about a eight hundred thousand dollar contract. And all of a sudden, we want commitments.
No, no-
There was some times-
No, no, I don't, I'm not necessarily needing a commitment, but I don't wanna bring something-
You want a commitment as far as years.
No, no, I, I want something that you would consider to vote on at some point. I don't wanna bring something back that's gonna cause heartburn. If you feel okay that you think this might be-
Well, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not really sure, because-
What, what concerns do you have, Ted?
Well, my first concern is that we're dealing with an eight hundred thousand dollar contract- Well, my first concern is that we're dealing with an $800,000 contract and is this the right move for this council to say, yes, let's do it seven years, having come back and say, yes, seven years, 2.8? I think there has to be more discussion. You know, our revenue is decreasing. Everything else is increasing. So, how are you going to balance this out? Where's the money coming from?
Well, Water and Sewer Fund is separate from the...
Right, that's what the increases, we put on the people.
You participated in discussions where we committed to a rate schedule over a certain number of years that will allow the city to achieve its obligations and goals in Water and Sewer.
Right, I understand that.
We can't take that money and use it anywhere else.
That's fine, but we can use it for other things, right?
Nope.
Not other things, but within the sewer and water department.
Yeah.
And these are the guys that do that job for us.
Right. So, the contract is set. It would be an $800,000 contract might be for what?
If we don't do anything, it's going to renew at 4%. They're going to come up with a proposed rate increase for the coming year and you're going to say yes or no and negotiate out a rate increase and then we'll be good for the next four years. Not at that rate, but, I mean, every four years, you'll come up and say, do you want to... It's going to be automatically for successive four-year periods. It just stays in effect until somebody says stop.
The only thing that's changing there is from four to seven. That's really the only thing that's changing, that I'm asking to change. I mean, we're comfortable right where it's at, but we'd like to have that changed to seven because then it kind of gives us a little more time to make some plans because, you know, it gives us an extra three years to make a plan. If there's a change in something, it gives us, it gives a little more continuity for three more years. That's all it does. Nothing else is any different than if we don't do anything. It just gives us a little more planning because I see these water mains needing to be replaced. We see these, the, trying to get this consent order and stuff released. And I would, I'm passionate about this community and I want to be part of that and this...
But when you come back, though, you're going to come back with, we're not going to see 2.8, you're going to come back with saying, here's what this year's increase.
Yes, yes.
And he's not saying that's going to be 2.8.
No, no, I'm not saying that. No, I'm just...
That's for you to approve or disapprove it.
No, the 2.8 is a good thing compared to what, you know, I mean, that's a good thing. Yeah, it'd be less than that, maybe, you know, I'm confident. But, yeah, the only thing that's really changing is instead of renewing for four years, we're going to renew for seven years. And then, and it gives us a little more continuity. That's it. If this is causing heartburn, I don't want it causing heartburn. I like this, I like this relationship, so...
Well, you can come back with five, right? And then discuss it from there.
That's a one-year increase over what's about to automatically take place.
So, what's wrong with that?
What's wrong? The three-year, you don't see any benefit to a longer-term contract?
Well, I can see that we're committed for a longer-term contract.
And they're also committed to us for a longer-term contract. We got to have somebody to do it. Alliance, someone else, or ourselves, we can...
Now, understand that the seven years is just, is the renewal cycle. If there's a problem, if they don't meet their obligations to us, we give them 30 days' notice and 60 days to dissolve.
I saw that.
Yeah. It, you don't, you don't need a lawyer to get a divorce in this as well.
It's just a story.
But the, and the number is going to be different every year. And we're going to negotiate that number every year.
Absolutely. Yeah, we work for your pleasure. I mean, it just helps us with people getting older and retiring and bringing people in and getting them trained. It takes six years training to be able to run them water plants. Six years. And so, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that has to take place and we get to thinking about these people and the people leaving and who we're bringing in and it just helps. I mean, it just helps. That's it. That's all. And I don't want to cause you heartburn.
Come back with something that reflects this discussion.
Okay.
Now, let's move on and talk about the budget.
Sure.
Thomas, Thomas, we get out of here. We only got four minutes back there. Eight o'clock.
I said eight o'clock is pumpkin.
You said be out here by seven. He said eight o'clock was...
It's pumpkin time.
Water, you want water?
You want to start one at first?
I'm not sure where you want to start.
You got a number?
I thought we were going to say Water and Sewer.
Do you want to talk about Water and Sewer?
They're here. I think we should go through their budget and see if there's, I mean, honestly, they're...
I think before you go...
You need to understand it, but it's kind of like, okay. We funded the budget. This is one where we can do, within the limits of our revenue, what needs to be done. Kind of allow on Steve and Terry to pick the projects that we're going to do in pursuit of our C-MOM and as long as we're making progress, it's not very controversial.
No.
No. And I think the revenue projection that they provided is maybe a little conservative, but reasonable.
Yeah, it's very reasonable. Me and Sue's worked through those numbers many times, trying to keep tracking them as the progress goes on from a seven-month average to a 10-month average to where we're at now.
Where do we get to the bottom line on these pages? With the way it's laid out, it's got me a little... I see revenue on a page, expenditures on a page.
Expenditures or free basis?
Then I'm a debt service.
Oh, okay. I know you do.
It looks to me like down at the bottom of the last page, the proposed 2015 total expenditures with the capital improvement removed, looks like 1.76 million dollars. And it looks like the revenues and stuff are on the front page.
And the capital improvements are listed on this budget summary sheet that I sent out. And it's my fault, I probably didn't need to do this for Water and Sewer since we really... I asked her to segregate all the new capital improvement so that you could see kind of what your options were. And while you always have the options in Water and Sewer, the items that are included in here are pretty much on the schedule that we've been discussing for the last two years.
Maybe it's just me.
But that figure...
Probably asked us before and it still confuses me. When you look at the 2014 adopted budget at $580,000 and then on page 31, then it says we already collected 743 into the emergency fund. And then, we're only estimating $460,000 for the new budget.
Because you'll be spending down some of that for the capital improvements that we didn't undertake because of delays in getting the grant. This figure, 743, would not have been 743.
But it would be more than that by the time you finish the year, but, right? Or is that...
It's going to be more than that.
Good figure.
But, we had prepared to make capital expenditures on the St. Mary's Road water project this year. We got notice that a grant was available to assist with the design work. So, we came to a screeching hall and said, wait, let's go after this money. For reasons I cannot explain, the Department of Natural Resources took a year. I got a letter inviting me to apply for that grant this year before I got the notice that we got it from last year. I mean, I, it's, I can't explain that. But now, we have it. It will be on your next agenda and we'll enter into an agreement with the state and they're going to pay 45% of our design cost. Now, we're going to proceed with the St. Mary's Road project.
Okay. And also, Martin, isn't it, Sue, isn't it true that you're adding on the proposed 2015, $460,000 to the budget to make it look, to make it to where it would have came out right? Isn't there actually more money than that in an account?
I mean, today, there's 743,000.
I don't even know what you're looking at. I'm not following it.
Page 31.
Is this the same page 31 everybody else has got?
Yeah, I don't know what he's talking about.
Right down as far as the estimated emergency fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
So, is any of this a five because some of it we're going to do, we spend money on it?
What we're going to have by the end of the year, Sue?
That's why it'll be less. Four more months. Four hundred and sixty thousand. That number's probably actually going to be 560 because we're going to have to carry this SCADA system over into next year's budget.
Okay.
And then, I mean, we're planning on spending some of that number as an inter-fund loan between this fund and our debt service to pay our bond agreement next year. So, would I be correct, on page 33, line item, 8,000?
500, that's the 512,000, 500.
That's where that number would go.
That will go there.
Okay.
Assuming you want to do all of those projects.
I see.
Again, we just...
What, we'll go there?
If you look on this breakdown sheet I gave you.
Oh, okay, all right.
And this figure for capital improvements for water is going to go where that zero is. And the only reason we did that was because for every other department, I wanted to break out new expenditures so we clear kind of what we were talking about. And we went ahead and did it for water. And of course, you could always eliminate any one of those items if you chose to eliminate.
Yeah.
So, we would actually have to add that number to the total expenditures? The 1.326, okay.
And so, your total capital outlay then is going to be on the order of $600,000?
No, I was trying to...
$1,000. 512, 590,000.
On the same page.
And on July 7th, we submitted the letter that talked about the proposed capital improvement projects. I don't know if you have any questions about what they were, we'd be glad to explain them.
That was the St. Mary's Road, Seraphin, Ninth Street.
Yes.
Design and water line replacement.
I didn't have this document, Martin, I'm sorry.
You know, we don't, didn't have, I mean, basically, is your 1520, $2,500 in equipment purchase, which, you know, certainly doesn't seem unreasonable in the scope of things.
So, is there a target date to start on St. Mary's Road?
In terms of construction?
Yeah.
You'll approve that grant. The mayor will sign or will bring back to you a revised contract for the engineering. Then, the engineer will begin immediately on the designs for these projects, St. Mary's Road, Seraphin, Ninth Street, and Hertzoff.
Anything to do with water block.
And, now, in terms of construction, you know, I don't know how long it's going to take.
Right. Okay, now, one of the things that was proposed in the budget in the beginning, and these capital improvement items were stuck in here because we didn't know if we were going to get the grant and how we were going to do that. If that changes and we look at the project as a whole again, then that 145,000 for Seraphin and, or for St. Mary's and stuff that we left in there, that was last year's numbers, that will go away. And then, we will find the funding to do the million-dollar project, which will be paid out of the rate structure that's already in place. And so, the capital improvement number will then go down by a couple of hundred thousand dollars. That was the initial plan when we, of how that project was going to be. It was, the rate structure is set up to make a debt service payment back of about $75,000 a year, which that $75,000 a year in debt service payment back was going to cover the cost of...
Now, that's issuing debt out of what is already authorized.
That's correct. And so, it's in there as if, because this, we just found out about the grant just this week. So, it's in there as if we weren't going to do the master plan. But if we do the master plan as it was once voted on, then the capital improvement line of the water goes way down because then that money will then be paid back on a debt service of money that's already been approved and voted on. So, just remember that the rate structure is set in place to pay back $75,000 a year. We can pay back more than that because the Water and Sewer Fund continues to grow, but the capital improvement line will go down if we do that. It was just that we didn't know we got the grant yet because this was all submitted back in early July. We just found out this week about the grant. So, the capital improvement line will go down by a couple, $300,000 if you would approve this the way it is.
But the debt service will go up.
The debt service will go up, but the rate structure's in place to make those changes.
Yes.
So, when I look at, like, page 32, for example, the numbers under 6,000, you know, 6,200, 6601, 6602, when there's nothing there, is that something that would be included in your...
Yes.
Larger line item number that we see?
Uh...
Because I mean, you got to have gas for your vehicles, right?
Yeah, it says 6202, Alliance pays for that. City doesn't have to pay for it.
That's part of your contract.
That's what we, yeah, we pay for that.
Okay.
That comes out of the money that you pay us. There's a lot of things we provide. Chemicals, repairs, lots of things to certain dollar amounts that the city doesn't have to pay for. If we weren't here, then there would be dollar amounts in there that you would have to cover the fees for.
Okay, so why, like, 6,200 vehicle operation, oil and gas? Why would that be included in our fee but not vehicle repair and maintenance?
Vehicle repair and maintenance is in our contract up to a certain dollar amount. And so, this 3,000 might be for another vehicle that the city needs to put money on that they're covering the fee out of the Water and Sewer Fund a little bit. I don't know for sure. Maybe administrative vehicle gets billed out at different departments. But we spend, we have $54,500 in repairs for the city. And that goes to building repairs and maintenance, vehicle repair and maintenance, distribution, collection, all those things. We pay for them up to a certain dollar amount. Another thing would be if it's over $1,000 in a repair, the city pays for it. So, maybe if we had a clutch that went out.
Okay.
A clutch that went out or something, it's going to be $3,000. Then, there it is.
So, are there city-owned vehicles that are in use by Alliance employees?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And part of your contract is that you pay for the maintenance on those vehicles?
We pay for the maintenance and repair on those.
On those city-owned vehicles?
Up to a dollar.
Up to a dollar amount.
Up to a dollar amount.
At least plenty of vehicles.
That's why we use your equipment and stuff.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Terry, is that set up, just off the wall, is that set up with other cities the same way where you use the city's vehicles?
Yes.
Or is this unique to this situation?
No, no. Most of our municipality clients, we use the city's equipment and the city's vehicles. And then, we do the oil and main, O and M on them. We keep, we do the repairs and stuff. The city buys them and you don't have to pay us to be paying for them.
Okay.
So, it's a savings to the city and then we're obligated, if you look in our contract, we're obligated to do the... you look in our contract, we're obligated to do the, just preventing maintenance and stuff on. And at any time, the city staff that aren't ours can come down and use them and, and back and forth.
Yeah, there've only been, since I've been here, a couple of times when there were competing demands for equipment and it was the backhoe, and now that they have the mini excavator, they can pretty well do everything they need to do with that piece of equipment.
Yeah.
There's never any equipment conflicts. Looks good.
So, it's like the forty-two.
Upstate?
Forty-three.
And capital, capital, it's the same situation on the capital expenditures, they're reflected on the budget summary, not in the actual budget, because we were trying to segregate them.
And those, and those capital improvement requests are, will, if you leave that in there, there's no, there's nothing in the grant, or there's nothing anywhere that will cause any of those to go down, other than if you guys just say no to them?
Now, the G.I.S. mapping equipment, you're talking about like a handheld tremble?
Actually, actually, we're hoping that comes down less, but the G.I.S. mapping equipment, not only would that be a tremble unit that would go out and do GPS in, no, we're, we're talking about mapping for the city. We're, we're talking about.
Can't map for the city unless you can locate the.
Locate the water sewer lines on a G.I.S. system, I mean, that, we're, our company's getting very strong into this, we're doing G.I.S. mapping for Cape and these places.
I can't create a map unless I have the locations of the infrastructure.
Right, this will be a GPS unit, tremble units, so that we can go out and put GPS marks on.
Upload the information to your G.I.S. system.
To our NOSE, and, and this is also for G.I.S. system and software for us to do mapping. I don't, and, and, you know, it's, we gotta get some technology, we gotta get some training and some things on it, but if you approve that, just for an example, I think that number a couple of, three years ago from CMO was somewhere around thirty thousand dollars to get that started. We can do, we can get this started for well less than this. Twenty thousand, we'll definitely cover it, and of course, we don't spend it if we don't need it, it's your money, you'd have to approve it, but I'm not promising we would actually even spend this money if it gets passed, because there's some technology and some software and some things that will have to get in place. But it will benefit the city in a lot of different directions if we can get G.I.S. mapping in, in St. Genevieve.
Can that be made into a hard copy, like a booklet?
Absolutely. Be able to be downloaded to tablets, guys can be out working, need something, you don't have to go back to shop to get it, it's there. You've got a map, it, it, we're looking at it a lot in our company, to the point that we've got a G.I.S. system, we have G.I.S. department now. We, of course, we, we'll be able to piggyback that, share that down here some, but I'm not promising that for a while, because these guys are really busy with what they're doing. But we're looking at it company-wide.
All right, I'm missing something here. Twenty, you may spend twenty thousand dollars for G.I.S. mapping in the city.
That would be the maximum, and we think it'd be a lot less.
Cannot promise that that information will be available to us?
No. Twenty thousand would be the maximum amount to spend. Earlier, you heard me say that we're thinking, we think we might be able to do it for a lot less. So, we might not spend that.
Okay.
Yes, these will be your map, I mean, this is your, your stuff.
What was the not available problem?
Uh, not available is the, the technical support from our G.I.S. department throughout the company that's working in other places. So, I don't know when we'll, I don't know when we'll be able to get them here.
Okay.
So.
But once you produced it, it's available to us?
Absolutely, and I think it'd be a great asset to the city in a lot of other areas, too.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, no, absolutely, it'd be yours, you're, you'll be, you'll own it, we'll just be on run.
You know, people walk in from time to time saying, you know, I'm thinking about doing something there, where's the water line? Oh, let's call somebody and find out where it is.
Yeah, and that would show where it is.
Yep.
You got a copy of that for Terry and Steve? This thing here that I, that we got.
Yeah. It's secret government stuff.
It's secret government stuff.
Is there any questions on those capital improvement items for the waste water department?
How much do we have those folks that used to get water in their basement? Fixing those maps?
Has it been, how many complaints have you received?
I, I don't know of any.
None?
And we've had some pretty heavy, well, we had one day. Not real, real bad, but that one, that one there, that almost, yeah, three and a half. That one night was like, we had two or three different places in town, didn't we? Yeah, water in their basement. Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Good and good.
Right.
Right there on Rogers, two Rogers, yeah.
Yep. Well, thank you. Sorry to take up so much of your time. If you have any questions, please give me a call, so I have a bunch of packages.
Is your number here?
No, they're, they're.
He's real quick to find people.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's what you get when you get his number.
I'll bring.
You get one?
Okay. I hope my one-page explanation kind of conveyed the level of the problem that we're facing here, and frankly, it's a problem we knew we had last year, and we knew this year was coming. One alderman at the table here felt that very strongly last year, that it's a, we're, revenues are not increasing substantially. We have been lucky to have the income coming from the Valley Springs TIF that has kind of propped us up for several years now, in terms of meeting our expenditures that otherwise, that come out of the general revenue. This year, that will be zero. So, the only revenues we have to depend upon is the cash that we expect to carry over, which to the credit of every department head and every employee is better than we thought it was gonna be last year, or we, as we went into the budget year. So, we, you know, we're. I am unaware of any frivolous spending that is taking place by any employee in the city of St. Genevieve. The, but, but absent that last year ninety thousand dollars, um, if, if, if we continue the operations we have today, just doing exactly what we're doing with the number of personnel that we have, and, and paying what we're paying today, um, we, we, we end up with a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars at the end of the year. And that's using up the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we expect to carry over from this budget year into next budget year. And that's making no new equipment purchases, no new, no, 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 no capital improvements or other capital expenditures. The transportation fund will have thirty-eight thousand dollars. Park is always behind, so we took, we took Park out of our general fund to get, led us to that hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight. So, the water fund and sewer funds, we just got through discussing, are where they should be. The cemetery ban, and ban funds are doing what they're supposed to do, and, and we can, we, you know, we, we use that money for purposes it's intended. The debt service fund is a one-year little glitch in it where we're borrowing from water to cover, but next year, that'll be okay, it'll all, it's all gonna work out. So, the kind of fundamental question and the direction that we need to go to the next phase of this budget process is where do you want us to look in order to put together a budget that you're comfortable with going into 2015? Because I don't think we can, you know, we can't go a year without doing any infrastructure improvements. We've got money in there to cover materials, the, you know, salt and the kind of consumables that we use. We hope we're gonna, and then we're getting closer to finding out where we're gonna stand in the kind of Point Base area relative to the cost of the project and what we can do on Point Base and Parkwood. But as it stands now, there's no way to fund additional capital improvements next year. Now, the following year, we, we won't have any debt service payments on the TIF. So, whatever revenue is generated within the, the TIF district, which will kind of go away as a district, is in the general revenue to be used however we choose to use it. And it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, it's better, but it's not gonna solve our, our long-term problem. Just give you a little, little breathing room. So, I hate to paint, paint a bleak picture, but, you know, it's pretty simple. You either have more revenue or you reduce expenses and reduce the, the level of operation that we, that we currently have. And then, it's a policy question, it's a, it's a board question, as to what it is that we're doing that you think we can do, get away with, with doing less. Yes, sir?
How much money do we spend on streets this year? As far as improvements on as far as roads and, besides the patching and things like that? We didn't spend any.
Basically, none.
Yeah. Because I know we had money there, and we discussed it at the last budget, that there was money there, it wasn't much, I think it was eighty thousand or something like that.
Spent a hell of a lot.
Now, is that gonna carry over?
We spent it on salt.
It all got used up.
It got all used up.
Yeah.
Salt, patches.
So, we're not gonna have no money this year either, unless we come up with some grand idea, as far as where's the money coming from?
They have to cut somewhere to get it. Right?
Well, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much.
I mean, we, 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 Sue and I believe that our estimates of revenue are maybe a little conservative, but you never wanna say you're gonna get three hundred thousand dollars if you're not sure, so.
Right.
You know, we, we say, okay, well, we're gonna have two hundred and eighty thousand dollars coming in from that, that source.
So, what do we do? I mean, the way we're doing it now is that we just don't plan anything for capital improvement as far as roads and, and things like that. It's not even in the budget.
Not unless we take them somewhere else.
Yeah, that's right. That's what we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
There is no money to do anything unless you take it from somewhere else. We can't increase our revenue, so we have to reduce our costs.
Well, we increase, we, we increase, we just pass a higher sewer and water tax.
Only use sewer and water.
Well, I know, I know that, but didn't we do that?
What?
You know, and the only other thing you do is raise taxes or something like that to generate revenue.
That's not gonna work.
Right, so.
We can't get.
We're back to where we talked about before, we gotta cut expenses someplace.
The sewer and water, you know, you got.
So, you see, are all the departments willing to cut some of their money in order to have a fund for?
None of them want, none of them want to cut their money. We have to tell them what it is.
Well, that's what I mean.
That, that priority, I mean, those, setting those priorities is, is what we do as a board.
Right, we set a number, and then we let the department.
But you gotta, you know, if the department has ten employees, you gotta tell them to have eight, if that's what you think should be done.
Yeah, that's, when you look at, let's take Parks, for example, they would like to have four hundred, you know, eleven thousand, four hundred dollars in stuff. Right? But we're gonna tell them, no.
They've had seven billion dollars.
You can't have any stuff.
This is the dream list, right? We don't, we don't have money for that.
No, they know that.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting to.
So, we're not really cutting anything.
That's what I'm getting to, Teddy. We, we don't have, we're not wasting twenty percent now, so if we tell our departments to cut twenty percent, services will be cut.
Yeah.
Which is, I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, but that's the reality. It's, I don't think there's, there's no.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna get done, I mean, two fewer pencils than you bought last year, I mean, that's, it's a bigger decision.
If you wanna find real money, you gotta look at personnel.
When I did the budget was, we're gonna cut it ten percent this year. You know, my God, we all cut it ten percent, and we live with it, we made it work.
But do you understand that the people that we report to, the citizens, they're gonna see reduction of services? And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying that to make it work, we can't, there's nothing extra, there's nothing, there's nothing already laying on the table that we don't need.
It could be reduction of service or a smarter way of doing things.
What's your proposal on that?
I don't know, that's the division heads should figure that out. We decide what the budget is, say, this is the budget, and we cut it. Now, you figure out how you're gonna do all of this and be smarter about it. So, you don't think people can be smart?
I think that that's a, a very standard approach to budget management. I don't think it's a bad approach, it's a standard approach. But I think that if we don't give our department heads tools.
It's worked for me for many years.
If we don't give our department heads tools to learn how to do those things or to think differently, how, how do we expect them tomorrow morning, you have to think differently? Just tomorrow morning, you're gonna, you're gonna reduce your, your cost by twenty percent, and you're still gonna get everything done, just do it. Is that the military way? Because that's not, that's not the, the business way I know.
You know, uh, yes, it is a military way. And we have budgets, we live within our budgets, and if the person couldn't do the job, we were replaced.
You just like to fire a colonel? You didn't keep your budget or fire, is that how that works in armor?
I mean, besides that, Tom, you know that.
No, I'm not being a smartass, Teddy, really I'm not. But at the same time, I agree that we have to cut costs. But to just tell somebody, and I've been on both ends of this, I've been the guy being told, you're gonna reduce your fixed costs by nine percent next year, and then increase your sales by thirty percent while you do it. It's impossible. All right, and I've been the guy telling the guy, you're gonna reduce your costs by ten percent next year.
Let me, let me use mine, I was in the construction business for twenty years. Every superintendent had a job, and they said, okay, that job is your responsibility, and you get it done as efficiently as you can within the budget and under budget, and we gave them bonuses for cutting out under budget. And they said, okay, I want every piece of equipment that this company owns at my disposal, so I can use it to do the job most efficiently. And that's their job, to demand everything they think they need to get their, the job done. But somebody had to rise above their parochial interest and say, I know you need the backhoe today, but for the company, it's more important that we use that backhoe over here, and I'll get it to you tomorrow. Somebody has to, I don't expect the department head to be making the decision that more, you know, money should go from some other department to pay this over here. They're concerned about their budget, about what they do, and they wanna do it as well as they can. We're the managers. We have to rise above that and say, well, we think it's in the best interest of the city to take this dollar and spend it over here. And the impact of that, as Tom has pointed out, is what. And the impact of that, as Tom has pointed out, is what quality of service your customers receive, because you're the ones who are gonna be held accountable for that. And so, you have to make the decision that within what's available to us, from them, how to allocate the resources to their best benefit. And if they think you made the wrong decision, they'll replace it with somebody else. The, but to, to say, cut your budget twenty percent across the board doesn't make any policy decision. It doesn't make the allocation of resources that express your view, or what you think your citizens' view of their community is and what they want it to be. So what do we do? So you, you decide, ultimately, and not tonight, which service do you wanna reduce? What, what, what activity of city government should we diminish in order to make money available to fix a road, to replace a road?
So what options do we have on what to diminish?
Well, I think it's, I, I think, we've managed, or the board has decided over the last years to, in order to do certain things and do certain projects that we felt like were necessary to do, roads being probably the most, biggest one facing us, and we've managed to do some and not get, we're still behind, obviously, but is to spend down the cash that we've had, that we've had there, and spend it down to be able to do a lot of those projects. Well, now you're at that year where the cash, you're still gonna spend down some of that cash, but there's not the cash there to spend down, and you're, you're getting very close to getting down to where the only reserve you got's a two-hundred and, two-hundred and six thousand dollar CD. So in order to actually get, and to maybe start building that reserve, you're gonna need to cut, you're gonna need to cut budget, or cut services, just to be able to keep the norm and not be able to have any money to spend on roads, or to spend on anything. You just need, you need to start building that, or building it if you want any, to be able to just maintain. I mean, that, that's where we're at, that's the point that we're at. I think we've counted on revenues increasing, or slowly increasing, or getting better, and then, I guess, sales tax is kind of on a, an uphill, slow uphill thing, but not to the extent that anybody would like to see it, but we are getting down to the point where there's no cash left there to go out and spend and do any projects on, and we're spending that cash to actually just maintain the norm.
So it's our responsibility to have a policy on what kind of reductions and where to take that money from. If we give it to the department head, so you just figure it out, and the street department director stops sweeping, sweeping streets to save money, and you get a bunch of phone calls, say, hey, my, my streets aren't getting swept. What are you gonna do, fire, fire the street department director because you didn't tell him how to reduce his costs? You didn't give him any guidance? That's, that's what we have to do.
Okay. So what are we gonna do? I mean, are we, where are we getting money for capital improvements? So, what are we gonna decide that we're willing to give up over here to get something here?
Yeah.
You know, and last year, I was told by some, by the board here, don't worry about that money, that's, you know, delegate it for roads and capital improvement, we'll, we'll do something with it. Well, we did. We spent it, it went into the general fund, well, it's in the general...
Teddy, you were here every month last year, too. You, you saw where it was going.
I know, and I said that at the beginning, if we don't designate that for something, we're gonna lose it. Well, we lost it. So we have nothing. We don't, we don't have anything to even start with.
We lost it in buying salt that we had to have, if we...
What, I'm just saying that, you know, I, no, we're, we're gonna look at these lists of roads and decide which roads we're gonna work on and everything, which we knew we wasn't. We didn't have the money.
That's exactly right.
Enough money. We tried to get money from other places to kind of build up the fund, but the fund is depleted. We have nothing.
So we have, so what we have now, this year, right now, where we're at tonight, is recognizing that to fund capital projects, we've got to reduce our costs within the budget, to, to make room for money for fixing streets, right?
Right.
Right. So, so now we get down to the individual department budgets, and we, we look at things like the number of police officers, the number of police cars, replacement of police cars, those are still...
Well, he said that...
No, no, not at all. But those are the things where we, if we decide, if we reduce the police department by, by forty percent, so we can pave the street. So that's the question, that's the fundamental question, is there, is the value of paving that street worth giving up forty percent of your police department? Or any other part of a budget? And I'm not saying it's not, I'm not saying it's not.
That's just a number you're throwing out, Tom, forty percent.
Yeah, forty percent.
Don't get people all upset that you don't cut forty percent of the police force.
What kind of, what example would you prefer it is?
I'm just saying that we need to look at all the departments, and we, as the board, need to look at that, if it's the police force, or if it's...
No, a few minutes ago, you said you're gonna tell them all to cut twenty percent and be done with it. And it's their job to figure it out.
I think I said ten percent.
Ten percent. So which is it? Which, which way would you rather go? Would you let, want them to figure it out, or would you think we should give guidance and be accountable to our constituents?
Well, maybe, maybe we both should work together and figure it out. The board and the division manager.
Well, I think that's what we've done the previous...
Yeah, but that's, that's my point, and I think it is, is, you can bring Eric in, or you can bring Sandra in, or you can bring Dave in. Don't expect them to say, take my policeman, so Dave can buy a dump truck.
I need what I got, I need this.
Right. We thought we were gonna cut it.
Now, what you might say, what, what you might say to, to Dave is, you know, and they're all aware of this, I mean, this is not a secret in, in city government, that we, they've all seen this, they know it, is, we, we gotta cut, and, and they need to tell you what their priorities are.
Right.
They need to express to you, and they will, it's not acceptable to say, I need everything I have today, because we don't have that. But, but you should rely on your directors to, to inform you of the priorities. And then based on that input, you can decide whether to take one from column A and one from column B, and move it over to C, or whatever, however you wanna do it. But it should be done with the input from the managers as to what's the most important and what's the least important. And that's what I need to tell them to come prepared to do with, as we interview them. But...
How far is that?
You need to be thinking between now and then, kind of in the context of this, these budgets, kind of, what your preferences are, what your goal, what your policy is. Because I, if you tell me to carve a hundred and ninety thousand dollars out of the, out of the budget, you know, I says, I can do it, but then I'm setting the policy that, for, you know, for, for your constituents. Maybe you would have not liked what I've had to say, or did, or do.
So we really need to be, have some, if, if we're gonna look for capital improvement money to spend, we need to have a dollar target. We need to have a goal to get to as we whittle away at the budget.
Should we look at the road list again and then decide which road we wanna fix, or do something with, or...
A hundred and ninety thousand dollars doesn't go a long way.
Not much.
In, in roads.
Right. If you're doing the whole base structure and everything, it goes a lot farther if you chip and seal some roads. So, you have to decide how you're gonna spend the money.
Chip and seals good for surface preservation. It doesn't make the bad road good.
That's better than no preservation.
So, Martin, just a, a talkable number of the overall budget for 2015, so I don't have to go looking for it, because I, I think I'll see it on one of these pages. What's, what's the number?
Well, we've got, this is a general fund items, it's all what I'm talking about here.
When we, yes, when we start looking at...
Top three, you've got a million nine out of the, you know, the general fund, you've got five hundred and ninety-one thousand in the transportation fund, and a hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred in the park fund, but you can't move transportation and park money around, they gotta be spent there.
Right. So let's not talk about those.
So you're, so, a hundred and, a hundred, a million nine hundred and eight thousand dollars is the, is the expenditure budget.
So, if we cut ten percent, it'd be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I mean, so do we want to look at twenty percent to try to act, you know, do more projects, or five percent, or... I think that's where we need to start.
Well, I agree with that, Tom. We, we need to come up with, with a number, you know, like, we, we can task with, with however, why, other, any number we want to, but, you know, how much is gonna hurt? Plus, get some roads, do something with roads, but, you know, like, a hundred and ninety thousand? I, I don't know how much that's gonna hurt until they tell me that I gotta cut this, this, and this in order to get there.
It's a ten percent re... My point, Teddy, is simply, we don't have fat on the table. We don't have things that we're just throwing money away at. So if we take ten percent out, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's not a good idea, or that I wouldn't be for that, but what I'm saying is, if we take ten percent, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars out, ten percent of services are gonna be reduced. So, so what is, so what is, so that's, that's the fundamental question, is what level of reduction are we comfortable with? Is it ten percent? Is it seventeen percent? Is it five percent? I mean, when some, when people expect the city to do certain things, and we only do ninety percent of that next year, because we're putting money aside for roads, capital improvements, we gotta be able to explain to people, this is why we did what we did.
Right.
And at some point, people are gonna say, you know, you've lost your minds, because I'm now experiencing a significant reduction in services that I expect from the city.
Well, the people don't have to decide, do they want roads, or do they want this, or that?
Well, they don't, they, but we get, we have, but we have to decide. But we have to decide in the next month for the budget for 2015.
Right.
So, and I think if I walk down North Main Street and, and ask people just on the street, you know, and they'd say, well, I don't know. You, you know what I mean? They don't, they're...
And they won't know, because you happen to didn't find what services is gonna be cut or anything like that. You're just gonna say, well, I'm gonna take ten percent out of the budget and put it in roads, and we're gonna fix some roads. And they're gonna say, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know how it's gonna have an impact on me, because they don't really know what's gonna impact them yet.
So, we're talking in a big circle, I think. I think we both kind of are on the same page. But before we sit down with the department heads, as Martin said, if we say to them, how much can you give us? If I'm a department head, I'm gonna say, nothing. I'm, I'm, there's my number. Right? So we have to tell them what they have to give us.
I agree.
So we have to have a target in mind to fulfill, so we...
Well, plus you, I think, have to set the priorities, and that, to me, is kind of the real function of this board. It isn't to tell, you know, the police department...
Absolutely not.
That, you know, well, if, if, if roads are a priority, and they are, it, it didn't, and it takes a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to do what we wanna do, and you ask the police chief, you know, what do you wanna do, and he's gonna say, I'm giving you what I think this city needs, and no more, no less. You, and, and you say, well, okay, I, I think I agree with you. So now I'm gonna go, I'm, I'm gonna go over here and take it from streets. You know, and Dave says, am I gonna be able to, well, you know, the snow, or, you know, can't buy salts, or whatever. Well, is police more important than salt? Those priorities are yours to make.
Repaving the street were a priority than having a safe street in the wintertime. I'm not against capital improvement, but these are not, it's not simple as saying, you just gotta reduce your budget. We have to be accountable for that decision.
I just think, I think people expect us to put the capital improvements on the same level, and we haven't.
As what?
It's like...
Yeah, same levels what?
As other, other departments in the budget, the capital improvements, we only, we just put money in there if it's available.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
Right. And it shouldn't be. It, it should be an item that is there, that you just say, we will always put money into that fund to improve roads. Now, we're not gonna improve roads this year, but next year, we're gonna have more money, and we're gonna do that.
That's kinda where we are, right? It's, how much you wanna spend on roads, and where do you wanna take it from to get it?
When you don't spend any money on a road for a year, that just shows people that that's not a priority. Roads are not a priority with us.
I, 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 I don't disagree with that.
When people call nine-one-one, they expect the police to show up, and the fire department to show up. I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of like a bigger priority than how bumpy my street is. I want new streets, I want better streets, but you've gotta find the money to pay for it. Where, where do you think it comes from? I, I don't mean that in a mean way, but I mean, it's gotta come from reductions somewhere else. So we have to decide, as, set policy. The board is to set policy. The board is not to determine line item budget for the department. That's what the department heads and Martin both do.
Right.
We set policy. And if we set a policy and say, okay, we, you know, we're gonna have to look at, we want X amount of dollars, it's gonna come from the police department, it's gonna come from parks, it's gonna come from streets. We don't have a lot of options on what to cut. It's really a pretty small bucket to dip our hand into. So how much, I mean, I'm, I'm just, how, what's our, what's our number? I mean, do, do we need to have a specific project, or do we wanna say it's a certain amount? And then we discuss...
I mean, I would think we would need a certain amount, and then from there, the board would decide how they're gonna spend that money, on what projects.
So if we set a certain amount, a hundred and ninety thousand is ten percent of the budget, that's a big piece of the budget.
It is.
That's a very big piece of the budget to give up. So how far does ninety-five thousand dollars go? You know, I mean, that, you know, how far do you whittle it down?
You know, and that's the thing, we gotta figure out.
And from where do you, if you had ninety thousand dollars, where do you spend it?
I would, I would hope that some of these aldermen are sitting here...
That would be a problem to, to address at the point where we have...
Also have some input on this and how they feel, instead of just sitting here and not saying anything.
You're calling everybody out.
How does the other alderman feel? Is it ten percent good, or is it, don't do anything, don't, I mean, I mean, Tom and I have discussed this, but there are other people here.
Can I say something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Good.
You guys have been monopolizing the whole thing, we've just been sitting there listening to you two guys.
I know.
You know what's that? Okay. What do we need to maintain the level of service we have from this past year?
A million nine hundred and eight...
I know, but do we have to cut any to maintain the level of service?
You'll have a hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars at the end of the year if we just keep going.
Right.
And don't buy a, a, a new truck, don't buy a new car, don't fix any roads, no new capital outlay, just to pay the light bill and pay the salaries and...
We're not maintaining the same, that's not what Buck's asking you.
I didn't, I misunderstood the question.
No, that, no, that's right. That's what I was asking. To be awash from, next year from this year, we'd have an extra hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars if we didn't do anything different.
Correct. What, you mean we didn't do anything different?
If, if we just keep spending at the rate we've spent this year, fuel costs, utility costs, salaries, vehicle repairs, that, whatever we, you know, whatever we do, we're gonna spend a million nine.
Okay.
And based on our projection of revenues, and use of the, of the cash carryover, if we do that, you'll have a balance, a cash balance at the end of the year of a hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. So we can do that. We can just trip on down the road for another year, and not make any capital improvements, and have a balanced budget. So we're not, we're not at risk of not having a balanced budget. The question is, if you wanna do more than just the minimum...
I think we...
You either only have a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to do it with, or you gotta cut from some other place.
Yeah.
But, if you take this on down the road, though, if you look at, at the beginning of this year, we started out with, well, you see that ten, ten one of thirteen, we had four hundred and sixty-nine? Thousand?
It's at the bottom, in the upper left-hand corner of this sheet.
As, 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 that was the beginning of this year?
Look at that, upper left-hand corner.
Oh, yeah, okay, I, I saw it.
Okay.
So basically, it's gonna be like our savings account is dwindling here.
Yeah, because you take it out of your-
And if things keep going the way they're going, we're not gonna have a savings account, right? I mean, to put it in simple terms.
That, next year, or, you know, we're gonna say we're gonna spend four hundred and twenty-five, now, we started with four sixty-nine, you know, we're gonna spend four, four twenty-five, but out of that four twenty-five, there was ninety thousand dollars worth of TIF payments that went back into that, so we basically spent, um, would you say, Sue, about, we spent, um, we have that figured, a hundred and-
I don't follow.
Four sixty, huh, you're not following me?
I think color's spark.
Okay, from the four sixty-nine, at the end of this year, okay, this was at, at ten one of, of two thousand thirteen, we had four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, at ten one of two thousand and fourteen, we're gonna have four hundred and twenty-five thousand, it looks like we only spent forty-four thousand dollars this year.
But we got ninety thousand.
But we got ninety thousand dollars in a TIF payment, so we actually spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than what we had, because we're gonna end up with, with cash left over, okay, next year, we don't get the TIF payment, so we're gonna end up spending, at the end of next year, we're gonna have this hundred and twenty-six thousand left, but there's a hundred and twenty-two thousand that we're gonna be getting from TIP, the TIF taxes that aren't being taken out from the TIF anymore, so you got a hundred and twenty-two.
Not next year.
Year after.
Year after, two thousand sixteen, so the two thousand sixteen budget, you got this two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar number, will end up replacing that four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar number, is what, but that's all you got, that's all you got left, there's no, there's no more money, until you get-
Till you get tax revenues.
Till you get tax, or you go into CDs, so, two thousand and sixteen, like Martin said, we can spend exactly what's on here and come out okay this coming year, just maintaining what we're doing, just the level of what we're doing and not do any improvement, but in two thousand and sixteen, you only got two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars to spend, so this year, we're gonna say we're gonna spend four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that's just maintaining, maintaining, not making any road improvements or anything.
Well, can we look at this another way too, like, okay, let's use an example of the baseball fields, the high school teams use those fields, right? For their names?
One of them.
Shaking.
One of them, okay.
Yeah.
Is there a, a fee that's charged to the school district for the use of?
Five hundred dollars.
So that's part of the revenue, what about percentage of concessions, or, I mean, is that?
That, uh, currently, that goes back into the field.
How, how does that go back into the field? We get, we get money from the, we get money from the concessions that goes back into the-
No, it's, it's actually, the Yanks takes the money and puts, and their expenditures, they put, all the money that they make, they put back into field improvements.
I thought we did the field improvements.
The maintenance.
We do the maintenance.
Cut the grass.
They, they buy new stuff, and we, I got you.
They put the irrigation system in, go through, they put the fence up, the new fence and the outbeams, uh, the bleachers, all that stuff, they redid.
But I, I think I'd see best point, and they're paying a reasonable share as other communities would charge school systems.
Yeah, or-
It's a point.
Or what, and I'm just using this as an example, it's what I thought of first, is when we have these big tournaments in town, you know, that's putting a, a, it's bringing revenue to the city, yes, from the people that come in and go out to eat and whatever, but it's putting a strain on the city's resources, too, are these teams that come in to play tournaments, is there a tournament entry fee that the city receives part of, or?
Um, we currently charge River Dogs five hundred dollars, I mean, we charge that league-
Is that per game or per season, or?
Per season.
Okay, so these other teams don't have like an entry fee to the tournament or anything, or?
That goes to River Dogs.
Oh, goes to the River-
Who's hosting tournaments?
See, I-
I mean, I'm just thinking, there, there might be some ways to increase revenues somehow, we're talking about cutting expenditures, but I think we also need to think about increasing revenues in some ways, and what we can do differently.
And, and I think that would be seen by some people as a reduction in services, because they think the city just does that, that's just what the city does, now, I gotta pay more, so my services will reduce, but I agree with you a hundred percent, that we should look at every, from the ball diamonds, I mean, uh-
As, as much as I'm pro that and involved in that, and my kids have been involved in that, no, we spend more, we spend more on that than what we generate from-
And maybe it shouldn't be a profit center, but it should be closer to being even, maybe, I don't know, but that's an excellent point, where can we find places to-
That's the reason, that's the reason to have a park.
Right.
Ball diamonds, ball fields, people can do it in the world.
It's huge, you, you've done it now.
Well, you know, we've done a survey of other communities, and they charge for the use of the, for tournaments.
And the school system, I mean, that, you know, we're, we're picking up a nice bill for them.
Also, you know, we had this discussion before, this tape, and-
Multiple times.
You know, it's, it, there's pros and cons, you know, are our facilities such that if we started charging, they're gonna go somewhere else, because we don't have as nice a ball field as they do down the road, but they'll come here because it's relatively inexpensive? I don't, I don't know the answer to those questions.
It's just-
Do we benefit from their coming here, yeah, to some extent, and-
But we still have these same amount of people working in the park, no matter what they're doing, if they're mowing grass, or-
There's really only two, there's-
No, it's, it's not that-
It's Darren and Barton are part-time.
Yeah, it's, it's not that much.
That's not gonna save any money.
Not, not.
I don't think anything, when we, as we continue down this path of the budget, I don't think there are any sacred cows, I don't, whether it's police cars, head count, I don't think that anything shouldn't be considered, and I don't think that we should, I do think we should consider ensuring that all city employees have the opportunity for a minimal cost of living pay increase.
I agree with you, horribly.
Uh, it's gotta be, I mean, it, it's a very fundamental thing, but if you don't get a three percent pay increase, you're making less money this year than you did last year.
I hate to ever see an employee go without some kind of pay raise every year.
Well, uh, if, if we have an employee that doesn't deserve a raise, we shouldn't have that employee.
Right.
Uh, that's just a, that's a plain and simple thing to me, I can drive around two more potholes to make sure that we get, uh, three percent pay increase to our employees, so, so they maintain a cost of living standard. And I know that last year, that was a pretty tough fight, and I expect it to be again this year, but I'm more willing to eat up a lot of time talking about it, 'cause I think it's important for our employees, uh, we want people to want to work for the city, and we wanna be able to hire the highest quality employee that we can, for whatever our pay range is, uh, and I think that's the same thing when we look at the police department, you know, we're getting all these kids out of the academy, and I mean, they're getting their first jobs, and that's a good thing, and I think Eric's doing a very good job trying to pull in some employees, but, uh, it, it's a quality over quantity thing with the police department, do we need two police, police officers and give the other A or guys a pay increase, so we can retain them for longer periods of time? Uh, that's, I'm not advocating that, but I'm saying that those are the things that I've been thinking about, and, and, when I've been thinking, and I understand why Eric really wants to keep the, the newer police cars, 'cause he can't offer these kids any money, so he's gotta put them in something nice to drive to, at least get them to come here. Well, listen, that, I've always supported that, and I, and when we have the money, I will support that, but when we start looking to try to find places to, to find some revenue, to find some money, you know, look, look what Dave, look what Dave gets by with every day.
Oh, I know.
The equipment that the city street department gets by with every day. Uh, I'm telling you, you can outrun a radio, and, and, I'm, I'm going the other direction on the police cars, if we had, if we were flush with cash, happy with doing what we're doing, but we're not, when we start making these hard decisions, I think those are the ones that are, are on my mind, at least I'm thinking about. And I would, I recognize, I would have to, to defend my position to anybody that asks me, why did you do that? And I can say, well, these were our options, and mowing in the park, why, I can't imagine why we mow all this grass. Uh, the unusable area of the park, the hillsides and the slopes and the, quit mowing it, just quit mowing it. And, and I know that there's lots of reasons we have to keep mowing it, but I don't get that, getting these, uh, buyout properties leased to somebody for any kind of use they could pop, that meets the FEMA mandates and regulations, uh, so we can put them on. These are the things that we, I think we need to really focus on, and like Beth said, are we obtaining the best revenue we can for the things that we can charge revenue for? Uh, sharpening our pencil, making sure we're doing the best we can, uh, to, to bring in all the extra revenue that we can. And I like the idea that, that St. John gets a bargain for using the baseball diamond, I'm fine with that, but as long as we got money to pay for it, I'm totally fine with that. Well, when you gotta start bringing that washcloth a little tighter to get a little water out of it, that's one of the places where, you know, as much as I'd be happy to do that, maybe, these are the things, these things that are historically have been the way they are, need to be evaluated, not changed, but looked at, evaluated, make sure we're doing the best we can. And I don't know where all those little nooks and crannies are, but it seems like every now and then, I just hear about a new one, you know, that this is kinda how it's always been, and I'm not against that.
Somebody left the lights on at the ball field one night, what does that cost you?
Oh.
Something like the church.
I don't know.
I think it's gonna be a-
Let those lights on.
Uh-
But that shouldn't happen at the ball fields or the big pavilions, and I go by there and seen it, when we got two officers, or even one officer, riding around, they had to ride around like I am, and see it, somebody should've.
What the hell are you doing riding around at night?
Yeah, what are you doing in the park at night?
Yeah.
Huh?
I'm just going to be up to the river and pull my eyes out.
Watching, John.
I'm just saying it.
I understand, I try, I love privacy in the park.
Don't give me secrets away.
I usually see river.
You'll see me up there at dark.
Be on all night.
Oh, absolutely not, absolutely not.
Hey, what, what's the money gonna be used for, if we do cut whatever amount?
Is that gonna be set, put in our savings account, to save for some other day down the road for a big capital improvement, you know? Do we have something in mind?
I think we'll always be able to find something.
Well, I know, but do, do we save it to do a, a large capital project, or?
I think we'll always be able to find something.
Well, frankly, ten percent is not gonna do a large capital, it's gonna be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and, and we can do some road repair work.
But I think Ted brought that point up earlier, that's what we talked about last year, you know, we're gonna have this left over, we'll figure out how to spend it, well, we ended up, we just didn't have it left over, we just didn't have it left over.
Right, that's right.
We didn't spend it somewhere else on something we wanted to do, we did spend it other places on things we had to do, like salt and-
Well, yeah, we didn't waste it.
Right.
If we have another bad winter, we're gonna be in the same situation.
Frankly, I, I'm not hearing good things about salt, just, you know.
No, the front page of the Post Dispatch earlier this week was salt prices-
Skyrocket.
It's not just prices, it's available.
So availability's driving the price, the lack of availability is driving the prices.
We're trying to order salt today, and our supplier's saying, I don't have the salt to offer you this year, and that's because everybody's got a budget to buy.
That'd be great, and we get screen right after.
A hundred thousand tons of salt is buying it, and, and we-
Screenings won't melt.
We can't, so you can't buy a hundred thousand.
You need traction a lot.
There's no market for it.
What it warms up, it'll melt.
That's true. Well, I'm five minutes past mine.
Okay, I think the, uh, we weren't supposed to make decisions tonight, we didn't.
We didn't.
But-
I hope, hope we got a lot of that, what we did, out of the way, though.
Uh, we had to have this discussion to get started, I mean, I just- Oh, we already have that scheduled.
Two weeks from now.
Well, we can leave the firehouse.
That'd be good.
We gotta do what?
They'll be the first budget we'll discuss, although their budget is, there's nothing in there.
When they're in the box, you look at it.
What is it?
How can I do it better?
Well, don't they have their, do they have their maintenance nights?
That's Wednesdays, Wednesdays.
Oh, and then Thursday, never mind.
Thursday, next, uh, two weeks.
I have our budget meeting on the twentieth, which is the Wednesday.
I'll probably do it Thursday.
So we're gonna do it Thursday, twenty-first of the year, if you can, unless you're late.
I thought we were doing every other Thursday.
Yeah, I thought we'd keep it on Thursdays.
They'll be at the firehouse, as long as you can do it there.
Huh?
They have court the next Thursday, that Thursday here.
Let's do it at the firehouse.
Yeah, let's do it at the firehouse.
Oh, I talked to some, my camera, no, I can't tell you.
I'm waiting till-
Is the meeting adjourned?
No, I just wanna, I gotta, I already plugged in. What did you talk to, I, about the old increase, so I can, I'd like to maybe get him at the next meeting?
Uh, it wasn't an agent, it was their corporate office, and that was State Farm, American Family, and also Missouri Insurance Commission.
State Farm, is that who Wilkes is?
No.
No, he's-
Farmers, excuse me, when I talked to Wilkes, it, one of his agents, and he said, it will go up.
So, is State Farm and American Family?
State Farm, Ameri-, well, State Farm, the guy that I talked to there said that, uh, although they're a member of ISO, they do not use it to set their rates. Missouri Insurance Commission guy said, uh, the ISO rating, regardless of our ISO rating, our insurance, and this was his take on it, the percentage increase of our insurance is gonna go up no matter what, it's what they base it on, or what they blame it on. If we lose our ISO, that gives them the green light to raise the rates, if we maintain our ISO, and they're still gonna raise our rates, but they have to go in front of the Missouri Insurance Commission to get them approved and have justification for it, meaning the tornadoes down in Georgia, the floods here, or the floods there, to whatever impacted this region, that's the reason that they're gonna increase it.
Did you get the impression that regardless of whether they use the ISO, they all consider kind of the same factors when they're making these decisions? Well, the ISO where the rating is based on certain, from matrixes, certain factors they measure, and while State Farm may not use ISO, or American Family, wouldn't they just be considering the same factors, I mean, it, it, it may not be the same organization, but those are the critical questions they would have to ask to decide anyway, isn't it?
Well, they, my impression from them was, is they don't take into, I mean, they don't even consider ISO, they go by all the other factors that I, that stated, what has happened in our geographic area, uh, like, if the Georgia area is part of our, uh, whatever, that's what they go by. And they can justify their rate increase, and they're not gonna, uh-
It's like claims, claims experience or something.
Basically, what, just, and also, the length of time since our last catastrophic event in this area, is like, if they were gonna, uh, when they determine our flood rates, flood insurance rates for the, if you're in the flood area, the probability of it happening again, even though we haven't had one in a while, and even though we have the levee now, the probability of it happening, it increases from year to year, and he went through this big wrong thing, and I didn't, you know, it was amazing, all the different things, but he said, if it's a five percent increase this year, it's gonna increase five percent regardless, whether it's, they blame it on the ISO, or they blame it on something that happened in Illinois, or something that happened in Joplin, or whatever, uh, but it just depends what they blame it on, and-
So they just totally discredit the ISO rating as being noninformant?
That whole explanation there was from Missouri Insurance Commission.
Really?
Yeah, and it's based on what they give a green light to, as opposed to, the ISO is kinda like an automatic green light for the rate adjustment, so the rate amount that they're, if they say, well, we have to have a three or four percent increase because their ISO rating changed, well, that's kind of a green light, it's not even, you know, that's justified. Whereas, if they don't use ISO, uh, well, why are you raising the rate, what justification are you using? Well, because of this happened down here, or this hasn't happened in this area for a long time, and the probability of it happening in the near future, they have to look at all that, and it's, it's more of a process for them to go through to justify that increase before the commission, than if they just had something real easy to justify as our ISO.
So I see, ISO does need some.
As far as getting a green light quicker, but regardless, the rates are gonna be-
Well-
It's what they gotta go-